Why you gotta cop to me? This Chick-fil-A look too good today. Who in that kitchen?
And who trash, who not?
We trying to see who we can scout out, you know what I mean? I've had a rough day, y'all, and it's only 3:16. He just said he coming to pick me up. I was like, girl, it's just gonna go with the flow. Y'all think we twins? Oh, yeah. No. It's another day with Shady J, period. And today, y'all, I am staying. I know I've been gone for awhile, y'all. We gonna do all that catching up later. But I have a weekly vlog for you guys today, so I'll be recording my whole week. Your girl is back in school and I got a lot of classes. And I done had a lot of stuff going on, so I just came on here to start the video out. But I'm about to go to class, then I got a study session later, I got some homework to do, and I'm supposed to be going to church today, so I'm gonna just bring God with me along today. And I'll catch up with y'all later. Hey, guys, so I'm out of class. Y'all, I'm so sleepy. And it's like raining, it's misty outside, so I hope my hair don't start puffing up. But, um, I am so sleepy. I'm about to stop by. Can y'all see me? I'm about to stop by and get some Chick-fil-A because I'm hungry and starving, and I was running late, so I ain't have time to cook breakfast. And then I got a study session. I got no sleep last night, like, I'm so tired. Do y'all see the bags under my eyes? Like, this is crazy. Hey, guys, I'm at the library. I went to Chick-fil-A, I got me a frosted coffee and some milk. But I ate it all already. These folks want to be in my vlog so bad.
We do, bro. We don't want to be in the vlog, we trying to get this work done.
Anyway.
We trying to get this work done.
Say what's up.
What's going on, y'all?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yo, what's up? It's your boy Jarrel. Um, follow me on Instagram, KingJarrel, K-I-N-G dot J-A-R-E-L type shit. We ain't getting this CIS work done right now.
Okay, okay.
Working with Shady J.
Okay, okay.
That should need to hear.
Okay, okay. Come on, Dez.
That's it, sick. I don't got no intro, no.
What's your name? KeShawn, okay.
Type P the fit, though, something light.
Something light, KeShawn.
Warm and shit.
That's my thing. Okay, since we showing fits, let's show the fit.
Hold on, hold on. Didn't see them. Didn't even see them. Shawty glistening.
Man, you know what I'm saying, you know what I mean? You gotta give me right to it.
Yeah, hold on. Put that shit on. Man, she got the shades on. Oh, Shady J. Oh, now I get it. I thought you was a Shady J because you be acting shady, but it's because you have shades.
No, we supposed to be studying because we got an exam coming up. Well, I take mine Thursday. They take theirs.
Thursday, Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Friday, Tuesday.
Damn, Friday? Man, this is the last minute. Hell, yeah. Let's see what Kennedy something on the chat.
She said, "On my way," sorry, y'all. I'll show y'all Kennedy when she get here.
I don't know how you gonna...
Y'all want to be in my thumbnail?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, wait, never mind, we gotta wait on Kennedy. What is an example of a biological system? It's a part of your body.
Something that go around.
Dez got it right.
A heart?
I'm gonna bring some stars for y'all next time.
Appreciate it.
Is that an example of a mechanical system?
A computer. Something that needs to be worked. A car.
When you say what, the what?
Example of a mechanical system.
No clue.
Something in your house.
Riding a bus.
Mm, something in your house that you use.
Phone.
No.
Air conditioning?
Thermostat. It is a part of social systems, but it's not a social, that's not the word.
So it's a social system, but it's not a social system?
It is a social system, but it's like a broader...
A broader thing?
Category.
Okay.
Yes, complex system. Okay, y'all, say hey to Kennedy. This is the whole CIS crew.
We gonna get the thumbnail?
We gonna, we definitely, oh, yeah, we do gotta get a thumbnail. Everybody come over here.
Taller, taller.
Okay. Okay, guys, so it is the next freaking day. I'm on the way to class. Hopefully, I don't be late. Usually, I leave out before. This time, it's 8:56, and I have class at 9:30. So I be trying to leave out really early because the buses be taking hell long. But anyways, um, good morning. Yesterday, once I came home, I was literally doing homework all day, y'all, like, literally all freaking day. Because I have, I had a lot of assignments due, y'all. I have five classes and two labs, so... Y'all gonna have to give me some sympathy, okay? Okay, you know, I gotta get work done first. Anyways, I have my microeconomics class at 9:30. And then I'm gonna come back home, and then I'll have another class until 3:45, so I'm gonna, um, update y'all later once I get out of class, because I doubt I'd be recording in there. I hope y'all have a great day. Alright, people looking at me crazy with these cameras, but I gotta stay focused. It's so ugly out here. I go to bus, y'all. Let's pray you don't leave me because I'm a sucker for running for the bus, y'all. I swear, I always be running to the bus. I'm gonna see y'all later. Okay, y'all, so it is 9:14. And I actually got the class early because the bus that I caught was like the direct route to my building. So I'm not late. I really be trying to take being punctual serious this semester because last semester, I really didn't care, and I barely went because I didn't have to go, so... Yeah, trying to be a better student. I'm finna, um, read my Bible verse up today. It is, I'm gonna read it for y'all. "But Jesus looked at them and said, 'With man, this is impossible; but with God, all things are possible.'" So my verse of today is, "All things are possible with God." You just gotta believe, y'all. I'm about to read this, and then I'll catch up with y'all when I get back home. So I'm back at the crib. And my class definitely lasted way longer than I thought it was going to because usually, we get out early, but we definitely there the whole time. Which is crazy because it was a review session because we have an exam at the end of this week. So now I'm back. I'm about to fix me some breakfast and wash dishes because I need to wash dishes. And then I'll be heading back to the library. Look at this boy. Say hey. Mala, say hey. Say hey, Poopoo. Say hey. He so cute. He looks so handsome, y'all, with his new haircut. Come here. Sit, sit. Good boy. Y'all, look at him, he's so cute. He's so handsome. Anyways, let me cook this breakfast or whatever because I'm starving. Okay, y'all, say hey to the vlog. Richie Rich. Okay, wait, wait. Okay, shout your hair page and stuff out, girl.
Uh, my hair page is slave dot vibe dot twos.
Okay, period, because look, look at the hair. Get into the hair, get into the... Stop playing. My girl, Charlotte, got this ginger. Don't she look good, y'all? She looks so freaking good with this hair, like, ooh. AJ, you could say hey to the vlog, boy. Don't be like that. Say what's up. He got that black and yellow, black and yellow, black and yellow. Y'all, I don't be seeing him that much no more because we got class together. I still, you know, be hanging out, chilling out. I'm at the library doing my work. I got class at 3:45. Probably just gonna chill, catch up, and maybe get something to eat because I'm starving.
Oh, hey, Damon, I got a surprise for you.
That's so nice. It matches my outfit, y'all. I feel so special.
Go give Richie a hug.
I know.
I'm putting this in my thumbnail, brother. Is it cute?
Yeah, sell it.
Show you what's up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, we're twenty, we're twenty. That is so sweet, you thought about it. Okay. Okay. Eating Chick-fil-A as always. Every GSU, every GSU student, I already know what time it is. Literally. My man Dez with me, yep, yep, yep. So we just gonna eat our little food, and then we gonna go to class. Then you ready for your exam? I definitely gotta study. I'm scared, Jarrel, if I not say nothing in the group chat.
I feel like, I feel like I'm even better than I expected behind my eyes.
I feel like I'm actually gonna study, like, and lock in. This Chick-fil-A look too good today. Who in that kitchen? It don't be this good, like, the fries good. I mean, not the tenders, the nuggets crispy. Messing with it. Leaving class, leaving class, leaving class, leaving class. Oh, gosh, now we have to go study because I have an exam at 2:00 on Thursday. I don't think it's gonna be that bad. I just think everybody just need to do their part and study. That's all. Where my twin? I don't even know where he at. Twin is in a committed relationship. He wanna be me so bad. Oh, my God. No, no, it's definitely... Shady J cannot be mimicked.
Hey, you got that shit on. Y'all already know she got it on. Y'all already know. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, yeah. I can't wait for this vlog to come out.
I can't either. Y'all, we in the, uh, we in the B-ball court, trying to be...
What's tea? We saying who trash, who not?
We trying to see who we can scout out, you know what I mean?
You said you who, right? All one-on-one on the way, twin.
One-on-one on the way.
All one-on-one on the way, one-on-one on the way.
Alright, now I gotta beat twin, yep.
Gotta beat him. Oh, this boy got the book bag on. That's your boy.
So, hey, guys, it is now Wednesday, okay? Do not mind this, this right here. Just act like this ain't looking like that. But anyways, um, it is February 1st. And I have two classes today. I have a class at 9:30, which is accounting. I have another class at 11:00, which is my environmental science lab. But, y'all, my environmental science class is literally two classes because I have a lab and I have a regular class. Now, the regular class is online. So... Long story short, that class got a lot of work in it, and I'm still not done with the work, which I'm literally almost done. I just have, I'm on my last assignment, basically. I just have to finish this study guide, basically, and I'll be done. So I was going to go to accounting class and finish my assignments, because my assignments are due at 2:00, but I don't get out of class until like 12:45. So by the time I get back home, I would have to rush and do the study guide, turn it in, and then I have a extra credit study session at 2:00. So it's just like, I might as well just do it now, get it done, and then I don't have to worry about it. So I'm not going to accounting class, y'all, but it's lectures online that I can look up and, you know, get the information from, so I'm not gonna trip about it, which it kinda makes me upset because this semester, I have been very punctual, like, I've been on time, I've been going to class every single day, like, I don't even play like that. I've just been for real, for real, like, I've really been locked in, and the fact that all of my classes, besides my labs, are not even mandatory, like, I don't have to go, and the fact that I've still been going and being on time, I'm proud of myself. So, yeah, it's not like I'm gonna lose attendance or anything for not going to that class, but... Anyways, I'm about to sit here and finish my study guide after I eat my breakfast, finish my study guide, so I can leave out by probably like just 8:56, so I wanna leave out probably around like 10:20. Yeah, so I can make sure I get there on time, no difficulties, because the bus be taking forever, y'all, and I have to be on time for my labs. But today is February 1st, so my room has to be cleaned today, bro. I need to clean my room. I need to clean my room, I need to update my calendar, I need to do all of that, so I'm probably gonna do all that later with y'all. But I'm finna finish this work, and then I'll see y'all later. Turn up every day, girl. They don't say that in the Bible. Can't give it up because you love the lifestyle. Yo, so I got my pizza. Not asleep on Lucy's. Lucy's pizza is really good, like, it really is. But, uh-uh, get your, get your, get yourself out my food. But I'm literally, I gotta show y'all something. Like, look, y'all, do y'all see that view? I feel like you can't really see it on a camera, but like, in person, it's so beautiful, like, it's so beautiful, it's so, it is so, it is so, it is so beautiful. If you know, you know, if you don't, then you don't, but I'm literally about to sit here and like listen to my music and vibe out and just meditate and eat my food because I've had a rough day, y'all, and it's only 3:16. And I just need to relax, and, and this is just kinda like my safe place, you know, when I need some air or some thinking time. I never brought Mala up here with me. The only reason why he with me is because he rode with me to go get this pizza, but if he start getting on my nerves, then we'll be back in the house real fast, because it sound like he finna be getting on my nerves. Hey, calm down, just relax. I'm listening to some Drake right now because that's who we on. Very greasy. I wish I brought my journal, y'all, I could've journaled. Dang. I need to make a thumbnail. Oh, Mala, you look so cute. You literally look so freaking cute, I just wanna smother you. So, hey, y'all, it is the next day. Your girl went and took her exam, just currently. 1:17. I went and took my exam at 12:00, and your girl passed. You excited too? Your girl passed, I made a B+, I am so freaking happy, y'all, because like I actually studied, you know, and I was not expecting to get that grade, but I was just praying and studying, just like, you know what? I, I, you know, I didn't go in stressing about it, it was just like, you did your part, so now all you gotta do is handle the, I mean, you did your part, so now you just gotta trust in God and allow him to handle the risk. So now, I'm finna go eat me something and then probably start cleaning up, because yesterday, I did not clean my room, y'all. I literally, I don't even know what I did after I ate in the car. Last time y'all saw me, I was in the car eating. I think, yeah, I had a lot going on yesterday. Now, I'm about to go eat something, start cleaning up, and then I have a date later, guys, so I'mma film that. I think I'mma film a TikTok, like a get ready with me TikTok. We gonna see, depending on how much time I have and if I got like my outfit and stuff picked out and ready and all that type of stuff. So I'll probably see y'all later when I am getting ready for my date, because I feel like it's nothing else to really film until then, so... Yeah, I'm actually really excited, y'all. I haven't been on a date in almost over a year. So this is exciting. I don't know where I'm going, but he just told me that he was picking me up, so... Yeah, I'm happy, I'm excited, but I really hope my outfit come together because it's raining too, y'all. It's supposed to be raining all night. We gonna see, but anyways, I'm done talking, I'll catch up with y'all later. Hi, guys, so I'm getting ready for my date. I got on this two-piece set.
Six thirty-eight.
It's six thirty-eight, and I'm supposed to be ready by 7:30. So I got on this. I'mma put this on with my, my little trenchy, and I got these white boots. We gonna call it a day with these shades. I done tried on a hundred different outfits. Yeah, I'mma just go with this.
Dez been a hundred.
Dez been a hundred, like, and the crazy thing is, this was the first outfit that I had in mind, but I just, I don't know what I was doing.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was, I swear to God, me, I swear. I swear to God, earlier today, earlier today, I was thinking in my head, I'm like, Dez, I'mma put that on, I'mma put that on, I promise you. Why she trying to tell me I'm lying? Anyway.
You had an outfit in mind, and it wasn't Dez?
No, before, like, or after he told me girly, I had that outfit in mind. When he, when I asked him, because I had my outfit in mind, and then I asked him, and then once he said girly, I was like, okay, I already know I'm putting this on.
Oh, okay.
But I just didn't, I was like, I was trying to find something else. Basically. And I should've just went with it, because I could've been ready. But anyways.
But if I'm gay, it'll look good.
I, I just... I don't like my hair, though, it's frizzy and stuff. I'm gonna put this lotion now, honey. Y'all, I don't know where I'm going. I just getting picked up at 7:30. So... Should I take them on a date, Neo?
No. This is not that. Dez probably have a body after.
Neo said, "Don't take y'all, leave y'all on the cliffhanger."
Yeah, leave y'all, be still with it, yeah. I love them, but...
Can't be spilling the tea.
Not yet.
I wouldn't even show his face, honestly. Oh, I need to shave my mustache. Okay. Well, I need to shave my mustache really fast because I don't want to be out there looking like a little boy. Y'all can't believe I'm going on a date. Is it raining?
Um, over here, yeah, it's not raining heavy, though. Okay.
Neo, can you believe I'm going on a date? I'm so like, I can't believe you.
I can believe you.
I can't. People don't be taking me on dates.
I'm good. You're good.
They die. They be trying to pull up all the time. They don't be trying to take me out. No shade, no tea.
I'm trying to clear it up. That is scary. Holy, he said, "No shade, no tea," though. No shade, no tea.
I don't know who watching my videos. I can't lose when I'm with you. Y'all, my booty look big in this skirt. Even though it's not gonna be seen because I'mma have that long trenchy on. I need to be smelling good. I need him to, I need him to smell me from a mile away, okay? Y'all feels me. Put this on, put this on my neck. But I'm probably gonna see y'all when I'm officially done getting ready so I can lock in, because it's about to be time to go. And I need to get it together, so... I'll talk to y'all in a minute. Yeah, okay, I'm looking good, okay. Let me, let me put the camera down for y'all. Let me put the camera down for y'all, so y'all can see the real, the real tea or whatever. Okay, per, I'm looking good. He just said, um, he's here, basically, so... This is the bag for today, you know, nothing crazy. I hope my keys can't get in here, because I got a lot of stuff in here. But, yeah, y'all, I have no idea where I'm going. I don't know if we going somewhere to eat. I assume we're going somewhere to eat, I hope so, because I'm hungry. But I have no idea. He just said he coming to pick me up. I was like, girl, it's just gonna go with the flow, okay? Okay, two-piece set, trench coat, white boots, white bag. Yeah, that's how we come in, and then we got the shades. If you wanna see details on this fit, follow my fashion page at a.fashionstatement underscore. Yeah, and you'll get the, you'll get the fit deets, okay? You'll get the fit deets. But no, for real, follow my fashion page, because we lit over there. Like, we really lit. I didn't end up making a TikTok, y'all, but maybe next time. So I'm about to go, and I'll check in with y'all when I get back to tell y'all how it went. Hey, guys, it is the next day, and it is Friday, yay! My date last night, it was fun, it was cool, you know, you know, we just, we got something to eat, went to the movies, you know, you know, chill, chill stuff, chill stuff. Now, I'm taking this little munchkin out. Say hey, Mala. Mala, say hey. He like, girl, open the door, I'm ready to go. But, um, yeah, it is so pretty outside because it's been so ugly. But I'm about to go to the library and be successful. And, um, I might go get me a smoothie, because I want a smoothie, and I haven't eaten it all day. And I have a date tonight, another date. Y'all gonna see. And, yeah, that's just what we doing, you know, we gonna have a good day today. I just came on here to check in with y'all, and I'mma see y'all later when I get to the library. Good boy, good boy, you pee peeing, good boy. You need to poopoo, because I know you gotta poop by the way your stomach looking. Back at it again.
Real Shady J in the building?
No, I'mma cut that out my vlog. Dez over there.
Yeah, what's going?
We doing our work for CIS. I'm so tired all of a sudden. I just had all the energy in the world, and then it just like went away, and I'm hungry. I want a smoothie.
From where?
I don't know, where is the smoothie place?
Ain't got no smoothie places.
There is one.
Where?
By Atahole.
The smoothie place next to Atahole? Looks like you gonna go Starbucks? Only place I know over next to Atahole.
Starbucks ain't got no smoothie place. I mean, no smoothies. It's a, it's a place next to, it's all them places over there next to Atahole.
Beats me. This shit is long, though.
I think I deserve a meal, though, since I passed my test. Oh, yeah, I don't see no smoothie place.
No smoothie, man.
Ooh, don't that look good?
You made that?
No, that was a buffet house. Y'all, look at my meal last night. Five star, all, I mean, all-star, I said five.
I ain't had that shit in so long, man.
Ooh, y'all, that's looking good. You think it'll be cute to take pictures out here?
It'd be better if the cheese had some leaves, though. The fuck?
Hey, guys, so I'm on my date. No, we don't do that. We do not do that, round here, partner. We're going to Mo's, guys. This is me and Nia's thing. Wait, where are they? I can't see the Mo. Let me get in. Where? Oh, it's right here. I'm scared. You act like you don't go to school, round here. He might see. Not round here, partner. Not around here, partner. Hi. We in the Mo's. I know they don't. That's how me and Nia came here, she lost her phone. Really? Yeah, on the way.
That was not that day.
Yes, it was. We didn't know how to go to Mo's that. Yes, we did. That was my first time here.
I got bad memories.
You do, because we thought it was here. Remember, you remember? We thought somebody here stole your phone. You don't remember that?
I got bad memories.
This girl got bad. She erased all our memories.
Girl, no.
Y'all think we twins?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We gotta take Instagram pictures. Okay. You're like, what's up, we getting at Mo's? Nia, can you order my bowl?
You want a bowl?
Yeah, what you getting?
I think I want a case of beer. That's that man asking about where we going.
The fact that we look back and still didn't say nothing is crazy.
I was trying to make sure.
Mwah, kisses. Yes, mom. Guacamole. Ooh, y'all, look at that bowl looking good. Look at that bowl right there. Why I didn't zoom in?
Oh, yeah, I was about to say.
When Nia make the bowls, they be good. Wash her up.
You just getting the food.
Yeah, I'm not getting you in the camera. Yes, please. You want triple A sauce?
Yes.
Yes, um, I like it spicy. Get that, get that sauce on there. Y'all come to GSU Mo's. Free promo.
Make sure we are not got the camera, okay?
Oh, yeah, y'all not in the camera. Uh-huh. You're not a real thing. So, y'all, we was gonna eat at Mo's, but they kicked us out.
Oh, yeah, that was very rude.
That was very rude. No tip. I ain't give them no tip, not even a dollar.
Heavy on the zero.
Heavy on the zero. But we in the game room. You know what I mean? You know, we finna eat our food and chill and relax and have our little date night type thing, you know what I'm saying? Because y'all ain't doing it like a.
Y'all are not.
Y'all are not doing it like us. We just chilling like a bill, I done kick my shoes off. Kick off your shoes and relax your feet. Just kick it.
What was we singing earlier?
Damn.
Oh, and it's Black History Month, so you know, this is for the niggas, strictly for the, this is for the, the real. No, really.
No way.
Heavy on that.
What was we singing?
I don't know, but we was singing it. I was just singing it now to one of them.
Yeah, Nia begin to good bowls, so I told her to make mine.
Delicioso. You want a different light or this good?
It's good. It's given. God is good, God is great. Let us thank God for our food. By our head, we always say, give us a little daily bread, amen.
Amen.
We love you, God. Thank you so much for blessing us with the money to get this food.
Right.
I pray your hands are over this food.
Get this one nice little stir.
Folks probably be thinking my video is Bible study. I talk about God every day. I don't play by God, man. Dang, I can't open mine. What if this just spill all over me? I'd be so mad. I'd be like, it's.
That's good.
It's good?
I'm glad I got a bowl. Ooh, child, what you do? Goo your? They had attitude.
They did.
They did not on the, ooh, I look strong. That's what that gym do.
Okay, my girl been in the gym. She's really, really above. That's mine, so.
It's actually good.
What them napkins did? All right, we finna taste.
They know they didn't close that no non. Tell me no.
No A. They lying. They're definitely lying.
Took that sticker off that had their tongue, so they can change their tongue.
Because they definitely used to have a tongue. Ooh, y'all, this, this thing looking delicioso.
Ooh, I haven't had a bowl in so long.
I haven't either. No, actually, I had a, I made a burrito bowl the other day. It was smacking too. I ain't even gonna cap, yeah. I still needed like other ingredients and stuff, but for my first time making it.
I'm so strong. I don't even do upper body.
You just been.
Every day, I never do upper body. I do cardio. And, um, abs and stuff. You knew it wasn't happening.
I was just about to say. It does buzz. That's buzzing, y'all. I ain't even put the chips in there yet.
Yeah. I don't understand how a bowl is the cheapest thing, and that comes with the most stuff.
Yeah, I don't either.
Like, a burrito is more expensive than a bowl.
I think because the burrito come with like the tortilla, and that's probably more expensive than like rice and all this stuff. You get what I'm saying?
I guess.
Because tortillas are cheap.
Richie just said it was expensive.
I mean, tortilla chips are cheap, but the, the actual tortillas probably cost more.
I guess.
Yeah, this buzzing, y'all. But we gonna eat in two, and I'mma get back to y'all in a minute.